This conference will now be recorded.
November thirteenth, council meeting called order, would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The chair will now entertain a motion to amend the agenda.
In light of Chuck Stites' acceptance of the position of Unified Government Commissioner, I move to amend the agenda in order to fill the vacancy created in the council.
Second.
Do we have discussion before that?
You can have discussion.
If, are we, have we established, I've heard there are multiple attorneys' views on whether that seat is actually vacated.
Before you, you have a paper from the head of the liberal council, LKM, and I have conferred with our city attorney about the process.
So, in the statute that is cited in the email below is KSA nineteen two oh five A. And in nineteen two oh five A, it gives multiple exceptions to that rule. It has KSA, it says except as provided by KSA twelve dash three forty-four, which is a whole huge section, and twelve dash three thirty-five, and amendments thereto, so there are amendments still to be, to be looked into. KSA twenty twenty, supplement twelve, three sixty-three, and twelve, three sixty-five, and then more amendments there too, which means there are even more things that would be, need to be looked into to confirm that that seat is vacated. Section B of nineteen dash two oh five, which was cited by that attorney, also says that it gives the possible provision of a council person being able to not accept pay for that position, to retain their position. Let's see, so if you look into section twelve, three forty-five, which is one of the exceptions listed by the attorney, it says that, it pulls Wyandotte County out and says it's specifically handled differently because it's defined as a unified government in section seventeen, article two of the Kansas Constitution. Now, if we have not looked in detail into all of those exceptions and amendments, I feel like it would be jumping the gun to, to act so quickly on that without, I know that Councilman Stites has asked for an AG opinion on the issue, which I don't think would be out of reach in making sure we are giving due diligence, to make sure we are doing everything ethically and with transparency for our constituents. The council seat was filled by an election of the people of Edwardsville, and before overturning an elected seat, I feel like they should be given ample opportunity to be sure we are moving forward legally and ethically. There is no circumstance where politicians move to add something so impactful to an agenda at the very last second when they're acting in integrity. I think a quick response with little time invested by just an email to an attorney, when there have been differing opinions from attorneys hardly justifies the action. I think we owe it not only to Councilmember Stites, but also to the people of Edwardsville who elected him, to get an official AG opinion before moving forward.
Would you respond to that?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know that I'll remember everything that you brought up, but please remind me if I did not. I'm not aware of any attorney who's contacted me or let it be known to me that they disagreed.
And how much time was Councilwoman Stites able, how much notice was he given to get an attorney in contact with you?
There's no, there's no reason for him to get it. It's his choice whether he wants to hire an attorney.
Right.
Certainly free to talk to me at any time. I hoped that he would because I was curious what his authority was that he was relying on
Yeah.
for just disagreeing with the application of the law.
I can tell you, because he told me, he contacted an attorney from LKM before running and was given the
I spoke to that attorney.
And she said?
The, I think that where the disconnect came was that there is nothing preventing him from holding a city council seat and running for county commissioner. I think that's where the disconnect came from. Regardless of what that conversation was, I had follow-up conversations with her to make sure that I was understanding what they were talking about. And essentially, a city position, elected position of city council is incompatible by law with the county commission. The only exception are for cities that are included within the unified government, KCK. That's why you have that exception, because obviously someone's going to be in the county and also be in a city. It does not apply to independent cities outside of that unified government.
And where is that explained?
That's in conversations with LKM as to what the intent is. There is very little case law on this issue. But there are attorney general opinions, and there are, there is some case law, and the reason is because this is simply operation of law. The rule of law has been and common law and case law and statutory law. That when two offices are incompatible, as we have with the city council person position and the county commission, it's very straightforward stated in nineteen two oh five. I did look at all of those exceptions, none would apply, but I could determine. That's an incompatible office. Then you go to twenty-five dash one, two, three. That talks about what happens when you hold incompatible offices. And what happens is that if a person accepts election to an incompatible office, which would be the UG commission, the person shall be deemed to have accepted the office last accepted and to have declined any previously accepted incompatible office. That means simply by operation of law, some statutes say when you're elected, we went by the conservative when you take the oath of office. That's an incompatible office. That's your most recent accepted office, and therefore you decline the previous incompatible office, which is the city council. That's how all of this has operated within the cities that I've been.
Well, it's currently the situation that we have a city, I'm sorry, a county commissioner who's also a state rep. And so I'd be hard pressed to find what AG statement has been made allowing that, that wouldn't allow a commission. And I'm not saying there is one or the other. What I'm saying is, when this wasn't on the agenda and we're adding it the day of to get, not give the council time to clarify, to ask questions, then I feel like it's not being done with transparency.
It was, it was my expectation that we wouldn't have to go this route, and yet it was pressed and, and we had gone this route.
How was?
It would be inappropriate to put it on the agenda any time earlier because until Mr. Stites took his oath of office, we did not know what was his most recent accepted position. And when the oath of office is taken, then we know he has accepted that position and.
I'm sorry, are you saying you didn't know he was going to take an oath of office thirty, an hour ago?
I don't, I'm saying that it would, well, I'm also saying that if we were to anticipate this, I don't know what he was going to do. I've heard many different versions of what may or may not happen, and.
It just doesn't seem right. It seems like it's acting not with integrity, and that's what I have a problem with. And I think that's what most of the people of Edwardsville would have, have an issue with, is it doesn't see, it just feels slimy, if that makes sense. And the fact that I know that this conversation hadn't happened between our, he wasn't given notice before now, and we're saying, well, we didn't know if he was going to take office, if, if he was going to get sworn in, like that's, it's, it's not ethical.
Well, someone indicates to you that they want to accept both offices. I don't know in the end what they're going to decide they would prefer to do or what their ultimate decision is going to be. This is just me telling you how the law applies to this situation. It's up to the council to determine what they're going to do because of it.
Okay.
And.
I feel like because of the.
There is a vacancy. There's been nothing that I can find or presented to me by Mr. Stites or anybody to show what's the basis for thinking that you can do other than this. And there is clear case law that when this happens, you are deemed to, in essence, have resigned your previous position. There's AG opinions from two thousand sixteen regarding a city police officer not being allowed to be a county commissioner because a city police officer was a city position. So there's even.
That's very different.
It's actually less than what we have here.
Right, so what I feel like would be completely reasonable is getting the AG opinion before.
I cannot. The AG, I want to say about three years ago, maybe even longer, changed the policy where cities are no longer able to request AG opinions. Unfortunately, they used to do maybe three or four hundred a year for cities. Now they will only entertain AG opinion requests for opinions from state legislators. So that would be.
That would be finally, you get a state legislator to ask for an AG opinion.
Something that the council would need to find a state legislator or approach and, and have an AG's opinion.
I could do that in twenty-four hours. I could do that before the next meeting. I just feel like, like sweeping it in. I can tell you, and I can tell the public and everybody here that Councilmember Stites has made it known to everyone that his intention was to hold both offices and was not given any notice until today that he was going to be removed from the council. And that, I, I know that you, you feel like that's the state legislate, maybe he should have known.
We're not removing him. He has removed himself. There's no paperwork that he files. There's nothing that we need to do to have that happen. When you take an incompatible office, you're deemed to have declined your previous office. That's just operation of law. I wouldn't have any way to make that happen or not happen.
And did you reach out to Councilwoman to make sure he understood that's what he was doing?
I let it be known through conversation that at any time I would, but I did not want to be seen as.
Okay, Mike, did you reach out to Stites and let him know that if he didn't show up tonight?
Question, please.
That he didn't show up tonight, he would be.
Request to move the, move the question. All, all discourses, so. We need to act on moving the question. Could the clerk please call roll?
Trevor?
I'm not sure.
I believe the question is to amend the agenda.
That means all, all conversation ends.
So we're making a vote on the, on the original motion to amend the agenda?
Yeah.
To include the appointment?
No.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
No.
Malot?
Yes.
And Mayor McTaggart?
Yes.
Motion stands three to two.
I would like to put before the council the appointment to Greg L. Scott to fill a vacancy of Councilman Stites. You have before you a resume. I will give you time to review it before we vote.
Mayor, just either at the conclusion of the meeting, or could we receive a copy of that for the record? Thank you.
You want both the, the letter and the appointment, the resume?
I'll give it to you.
That, just so we have it for the record, thank you.
I might note for the, for the public that Mr. Scott is currently a member of the planning commission and has served in that capacity for, for several years. And I, I will just read the brief letter opening. I believe that I can best assess your team as I work great, work, great work ethic and take a great pride in my work. I've had two great jobs in the last thirty-five years. I believe my work and history will prove that I am dedicated and loyal employee. I've also had the determination to be successful and the task at hand. I'm very detailed and hands-on and very leadership style. His, trying to find the section where he has served on the planning commission. Greg, is there a spot on here that says how long you served on the planning commission?
It'll be five years.
Okay, five years. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve your appointment of Greg Scott to fill a position on the city council.
Second.
It has been moved in second to accept my appointment of Greg Scott to the city council. Would the clerk please call roll?
I'd like to make a comment before the vote. There are two people in Wyandotte County that serve simultaneously in two elected offices that consist of one, a larger geographical area, and the other, a subset of that larger area, which I believe is inappropriate at the least, unethical, and at most possibly in violation of state or local statutes or ordinances. I find it hard to believe that they can serve both positions well without, without the potential of a conflict of interest or preferential treatment of one area over another. Tom Burrows represents the thirty-third district of the Kansas House of Representatives, as well as a subset thereof, the position of the Unified Government Commission District Two at large. David Haley represents the fourth district of the state Kansas Senate, as well as a subset thereof, the position of a newly elected member of the Board of Public Utilities at large, position two. A year ago or so, when I learned of Mr. Stites' consideration of running for the UG commission and that he intended to keep his position on the Edwardsville City Council out of disgust for the Representative Commissioner Burrows' dual representation, in retaliation, my knee-jerk response was, sure, go for it. Since that time, I have learned of Kansas statute KSA nineteen dash two oh five A stating that no person holding any state, county, township, or city office shall be eligible to the office of county commissioner in any county of this state. In light of this statute, and the counsel of our city attorney, and having taken the oath to support the constitution of the state of Kansas and thereby its statutes, I will be voting for the removal of Mr. Stites from the city council and approval of Mr. Scott. I greatly look forward to Commissioner Stites' representation of the seventh district Unified Government of Wyandotte County. I'm confident that he will enthusiastically and efficient, effectively represent the interests of the seventh district very well.
I would just like to add that my vote is, and no.
Wait a minute, we, we haven't voted yet.
Right, if we have comments, I'd like to make a comment, and that is that.
We're not voting in comments.
That's fine. I won't mention it. It's interesting that several of us have gotten attorney conversations about this already, and, and some have not. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. It's not, it's nothing personally at all. It's just not the right way to do things. That's all.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call roll?
I don't think you have a second.
Councilmember Malot made the motion, and Councilmember Adams made the second. Shriver?
No.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
No.
Malot?
Yes.
And Mayor McTaggart?
Yes.
At this point, we will have a forwarding in of Mr. Greg Scott as a new city council member for the city of Edwardsville.
Give me one moment. I need to go get those materials real quick. Mr. Scott, if you'd just repeat after me. I, Greg Scott.
I, Greg Scott.
Do solemnly affirm, do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
that I will support the constitution of the United States
I will support the constitution of the United States.
and the constitution of the state of Kansas
And the constitution of the state of Kansas.
and faithfully discharge the duties
And faithfully discharge the duties.
of council member for Edwardsville, Kansas, so help me God. As council member, or of council member for Edwardsville, Kansas, so help me God.
Like to welcome Councilmember Scott, Scott, who is new member of the city council. We will move on with the agenda. The first item on the agenda will, will be considered approval as a consent agenda items approved in November the twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Statement of the bill's paid amount of five hundred thirteen thousand twelve ninety-eight. Consider malt beverage license application renewals, consider resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two establishing a legislative agenda for twenty twenty-two. And consider resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three approving the execution of delivery of funds related to substance abuse mitigation in excess of five hundred thousand dollars.
Five hundred dollars, sir.
Five hundred dollars, I'm sorry.
I didn't see a copy of the cereal malt beverage licenses that were included in here. Is it in the packet? Did I just miss it?
We don't typically include the, the actual licenses that come in, but we list the businesses that were on there. And if they were not on, it's the same for that, that usually come across. Give me one moment.
There are no new licenses, so typically if we have a new business, I believe they're required, and you can correct me. But I believe if it's a new cereal malt beverage license, that they have to be present for that meeting. But if it's just a renewal, then we do not require that.
I'm not sure if it's required. I think that might actually be for liquor stores and things like that. These, these are, but these, Mr. Web is correct in that it's the same for businesses. You've heard of page eleven at the bottom page number of your agenda. It's the Jacksonville Convenience Store, it's MS Petroleum, Roscoe's Barbecue, and my store three. There is a note in the agenda, the staff recommends approval pending the final review from Edwardville Police and Fire, and I believe those reviews have been completed and no issues were found for any of the four applicants. The staff recommends approval of these. You don't have the full, that, that some of the, they've got, they should have the full ones, but.
Let me just add, just, I know this is a consent agenda, so we're not pulling these off for discussion, but just the one on the, the very last item, E, the reason that's on here, and you may have read, so a number of state attorney generals have settlements with opioid manufacturers. And if the city has spent five hundred dollars or more in basically related costs associated with opioids, then they are part of, basically they're part of that settlement, but by resolution, we give that authority to the attorney general, and then there'll be a distribution of funds. We don't know how much that'll be coming in the future. We, we're verifying that we've spent more than five hundred dollars, and I'm certain that both the police chief and fire chief, if you wish, can concur to that, that we have spent far more than five hundred dollars in treatment or dealing with or et cetera persons that have been afflicted with opioid abuse.
Make a motion, we accept the consent agenda?
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott? Epstein, I'm sorry. Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda would be the request for comments from the public. Okay, there being none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda to conduct a public hearing regarding the establishment of redevelopment district in the city of Edwardsville, Wood End Tax Acre and Finance District, consider ordinance number ten forty-eight concerning this thing. Mr. Andrews?
Mayor, council members, the first, the first item we have is holding a public hearing on the creation of a, what we refer to as the Wood End Road Tiff District. The district, proposed district consists of five parcels located at ninety-one thirty-three, ninety-one thirty-four, ninety-one fifty, ninety-two forty-seven, and ninety-three oh one Wood End Road. The, the council's previously been presented with a blight study. I will not rehash that whole study, but as you recall, we did find that a majority of the factors necessary to find blight under the Kansas statutes appear on these properties. For example, there are three structures that are seriously deteriorated. There is a lack of utilities. There is dangerous objects on the parcels, concrete blocks, things of that nature. And there's a lack of utilities and subdivision in the area. Prior to considering the ordinance tonight, it is necessary that we hold. Prior to considering the ordinance tonight, it is necessary that we hold a public hearing and take comments from the public. So at this time, I would make the suggestion that the public hearing be open and any comments be taken.
So you need a motion to-
Yes, we need to have a motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
Then moved in second to the hearing, would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott? Adams?
Yes.
Kahar?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
This is an opportunity for anyone in the public to make any questions or comments regarding this item. Would you please state your name and address?
Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Greg Kendall, president of the Windout Economic Development Council, located at 727 Minnesota KCK, and a resident of Kansas City, Kansas. I'm here in support of the resolution to create the Wood End Tiff District as proposed. Together with you and the city's team, we've been looking at different ways to get this location developed now for several years. As you all know, this is a challenging site. About half the site is in the floodplain, there are concerns about blight within the site itself, and there are access issues as well. We have found good success in developing nearly all of the rest of this park but for this site. We've explored traditional property tax abatement, we've looked at creative land use options, including one that was explored with Old Dominion. We've looked at how to incorporate public uses and retail as well. Each had strengths but all failed to overcome the cost issues involved. It's for these reasons we believe the development of a Tiff District meets the but-for test, and that but-for Tiff, this site will not be developed in the near term. We appreciate the work of the city team to bring this forward, to fund the infrastructure needed to move the site forward by capturing incremental property taxes. We're excited by getting this site redeveloped, as it is the entrance to the city of Edwardville and the county. With that, I thank you for consideration and ask that you support the resolution. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you, Greg. State your name and address?
Mark Bishop, 11224 Kansas Avenue. I rise in favor of this Tiff District. Being the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board, we worked really hard trying to get some other areas of the city. This was a mess, everybody knows, and hopefully the funds will come in and we can develop this, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. If there are no other from the public, it is now an opportunity for the city council to make any questions or comments.
This was just establishing the district, not agreeing to any development plans or anything like that, correct?
That is absolutely correct. Make a motion, we close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion in a second to close the public hearing, would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott? Adams?
Yes.
Kahar?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Mayor, councilmembers, the next item is approval of the ordinance. Ordinance number 1048 does two things. Number one, it repeals ordinance number 1046. As you recall, not so long ago, the council approved an ordinance creating the redevelopment district on the finding of floodplain. Approximately 80% of this land area is within a floodplain, which you can make a finding of blight under. However, because of reasons that we previously discussed, we decided to repeal that ordinance and instead make a finding of traditional, a traditional finding of blight. That's what we're doing tonight. So the redevelopment district before you tonight is being established under the traditional finding of blight. The ordinance creates the district, it does not approve any project plan. So we still have the work of coming to terms with the various developers that we hope will approach us at some point with plans for the area. No project plans have been approved yet, so we'll have to approve a project plan at some point, assuming we do come to terms with a developer. But this is the first step in hopefully making something happen that's desirable to all in that area. Happy to take any questions.
You said that there's no plans approved yet, does that indicate that there is some plans that could be forthcoming?
I will say that I'm oftentimes the last to know. I get, you know, I get brought in after the city's been talking to developers. So I'm not a good person to ask who the city may or may not be talking to. I can tell you that I have nothing imminent to present at this time.
Mr. Malott, I will just say, I don't believe we have anything imminent. I think you all do know that there'd been, there's a current property owner that had approached the city, and they still have interest in pursuing, but they have not filed any type of plan or documents at this point. They've kind of talked about their concept, which I believe we've spoken about, which is, you know, a single building of a smaller size. You know, that's the only one we're aware of. I know Greg is with us tonight, we talk about this site a lot. He certainly tries to market this site, but I think as he said, you know, the issue is access, primarily access and utilities. I mean, you have Wood End Road, which is great access, but getting into the site is where the challenge is. Again, as attorney stated, this kind of sets up the opportunities that then our economic development team can pursue those. And those would all come back to the council for approval through development agreements and a development plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think with that, I've moved to pass ordinance number 1048, creating Wood End Road Tiff Redevelopment District.
Second?
It has been moved in second to adopt ordinance number 1048, creating a Wood End Road Tiff Redevelopment District. Would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott? Adams?
Yes.
Kahar?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is to conduct a public hearing regarding establishment of rural housing incentive district RHID within the city of Edwardville, and consider ordinance number 1049 concerning the same.
Make a motion, we move him into a public hearing?
Before we do that, sir, just, so this is a little different process, so what we'll do is we'll give you an overview of the plan. By statute, a member of the staff is required to do that, so I will provide you an overview of the plan. We do not have a development agreement, but it's noted in the plan, we do have a potential developer who's been with us before. And I believe they'd like to just say a couple of comments. Again, we're not adopting or have proposed on here any formal development agreement or any formal incentives at this point. So process will be, I'll give a brief presentation, a brief discussion, we'll open the public hearing, take comments, close, and then we would consider the ordinance that would create the Highland RHID district. So I'll start there if I may. Just for some recap, as you recall, we originally on September 27th adopted resolution 2021-17, basically finding that there is a housing need in our community. That housing needs analysis and resolution are then forwarded to the Secretary of Commerce for their review and approval. They did approve our request on October 14th. That is then followed on October 15th where we set the public hearing for tonight. So that was resolution 2021-18, to call for a public hearing to be held on this evening. As the intent of the public hearing, it is to give any input into the plan. I did present you another hard copy of the plan, and I'll go through that and make a few comments. But again, this is approximately a 10-acre site. It is located by address at 502 Highland. It's near the intersection of 104th and 4th Streets. The intent has been proposed is to have approximately 25 units, which would be 50 housing units, and those would be owner occupied townhomes is the proposal. Again, in this development plan, as you will see, there's the introduction, which really recaps what we talked about from the September 27th coming forward. There are components of the development plan that must be approved this evening. And if we start on page two of the document I handed out, it's also in your packet, and I will point out why. The first piece of it is the legal description of the site, and so that is the formal legal description of the site. Again, there's a map attached that shows that 10 acres. Again, it's typically referred to as 502 Highland. I would note that Highland is not a public street, although it's often referred to as Highland Drive, it's technically not a public street. The appraised value, item number two, this is where there is a change in the one that was originally in your packet, it said the assessed value, actually the appraised value is 116,350 for the land, 416,250 on the improvements, with a total assessed value of $61,249. The property is currently owned by S.D. Shelton Excavating, they are under contract with the developer. Again, we anticipate this to be a townhome project. We did include language in here, so if, for some reason, the developer we've been working with, we're not able to come to a terms on a development agreement, somebody wanted to do something else, it gives some flexibility. But again, we anticipate we'll move forward with the townhome project. The developer, as they have formed, is Highland Drive Development LLC. Currently, because we don't have a development agreement, there's no technically contractual agreements or assurances at this point. That will be part of a development agreement. I would note that we had discussions, as you know, previously about the potential use of bonding. There was not support for that, we went back to the developer, they understand that. And they still are with us and plan to proceed forward. The very last piece is a feasibility study, says technically by the city manager. But I would just go over those two pages, that's pages seven and eight. The first page is the cost, those costs have been provided by the developer as to the breakdowns. Those are eligible costs, so those don't necessarily reference all costs to the project, but those are eligible costs that could be reimbursed through the RHID. And then on the next page, you see a total of the revenue projections. Again, these districts can go up to 25 years, they're not required to go 25 years. So you do the projection out 25 years. As you can see, bottom line, it would be anticipated that there would be about $5.5 million of potential revenue from this project. You can see in the gray box to the left what those are based on. Again, the lot values, building values, some of those types of things are provided by the developer. What's key to note is that the total revenues exceed the anticipated RHID costs, which are just under, just over 3.2 million. So that is one of the findings, is that the revenues will exceed the cost, and they do by all projections. That is an overview of the plan, give the developer a couple of minutes just to reiterate what their plan is. Then we can have the public hearing and take any comments. I would note that while oftentimes this process, the development agreement is done at the same time as this, it's not required to be. And we anticipate likely that development agreement will come back to you in one of your two January meetings, that is the target. Assuming that the ordinance is a pass of the city. That, Ross, are you going to take this? I believe you've met both of these gentlemen in the past, so I will not reintroduce them.
Good evening, Ross Vogel, Highland Drive Development LLC. Dustin Baker, my partner, is going to tell you a little bit more about the project. I'm just going to talk a little bit more about RHID, and I know I did this once before, but there's some new people and new information, so pleased to talk about, it's one of my favorite subjects to talk about. The Kansas housing study just came out today that they've conducted over the last year. And the first thing that they talked about when that housing study came out is the use of rural housing incentive district. And the reality is, if we were standing here last December, Edwardville wasn't eligible for rural housing incentive district. And Dustin and I wouldn't be here either because the economics just don't work. And I had a conversation with a really bright public official here in Kansas today, and he said, well, why doesn't it work? And we talked, we could talk for hours about why building and the economics don't work, but to break it down very easily, there are just not enough guys and gals out there being contractors, being subcontractors to meet the demand that's needed, and that's been going on since 2008. And you could see it building, and in places like Garden City, we were having these same discussions in Garden City, Kansas, in 2012, and now in 2021, we're having the same conversation here. And what we have to do is make the project price point enticing enough for builders to want to come build. And then we have to, and this is the key to all of it, we have to make sure it works for the end consumer. And the structure we're using here, as far as how we're structuring it, trying to make it work with builders, is one we've used across the state, and it's basically this. Dustin and I are going to charge a lot less for the lots than what they actually cost and what we would need to get. And in fact, one of the reasons that we're doing duplexes is that, you can see the numbers, these lots would be about 120 grand if you were doing single-family homes, and that just isn't going to work. It's tough to work with duplexes on them. And I will say this, it wasn't like we got married to one site in Edwardville. We looked at every site that your staff thought was maybe possible, and really this was the only thing possible, unless we were to drag new infrastructure two miles out, and at the moment, that doesn't seem very feasible either. So that's where we landed here, I'll say two things to close. The reality is, we'd much rather be out doing our engineering, coming to you with the plat and getting started, and not having to go through this process, or we're not doing it to ask for incentives, and I'm reminded of that because you guys get asked a lot. This is not because we're trying to make a bunch of money, it's because it's the way to make it work. Second one, if we get approved tonight, we're ready to move forward, and builders are saying, yes, we're interested in the economics you're talking about. If you can deliver at that, and we think we can, if this gets approved tonight.
Hi, Dustin Baker, Highland Drive Development. Seen most of you before on another project, and just wanted to stand up and say thank you for allowing us to talk a little bit tonight about the project. You know, like Mike said, we're not quite ready to submit. We'll have to get the development agreement done, and, but we are, I wanted to kind of give you a little bit of background on what we're proposing. You know, 25 to 27 townhome lots. So that would be, you know, for every townhome lot, that's two doors. And we're talking about selling the lots to builders, like Ross said. Right now, we have the land under contract, we've done test holes, so we know what we're dealing with on the land itself. We have the survey ordered, so it should, the survey should be done sometime in this month in December. And we've pretty much turned our engineering crew loose to start working on the preliminary plans. So we are serious, we're ready to go, like Ross said, and we're excited about bringing a product to Edwardville that's not in the marketplace, and bring new families to Edwardville, and that's what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor, at this point, we would entertain having the public hearing. Upon the closing of the public hearing, Scott Anderson will present the ordinance to you, and we will go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Make a motion, we move into a public hearing for the establishment of a rural housing incentive district within the city of Edwardville, and consider ordinance 1049.
Okay, a motion in a second to open the public hearing, would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott? Adams?
Yes.
Kahar?
Yes.
Malott?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this is an opportunity for anyone in the public that has not spoken to make comments or questions. Take your name and address.
Mayor, council members, I'm Greg Kendall, President of the Wyandotte Economic Development Council, located at 727 Minnesota, Kansas City, Kansas, and a resident of KCK. I'm here in support of the resolution to create a rural housing incentive district here in Edwardsville. A challenge we have in Edwardsville is a lack of, of new housing. For that matter, a lack of any available housing. Costs to build homes have risen dramatically. The costs, the added cost to install infrastructure is pricing Edwardsville out of the market before we even get started. We think RHID can assist in seeing new residential with these proposed 50-plus townhomes. This would be the largest investment in new residential in Edwardsville in nearly 20 years following Williamson Farm. Housing, the housing study that Ross noted released today clearly states that we need more middle-income quality housing across the state. That's so different here in Wyandotte County and specifically here in Edwardsville. We commend the state of Kansas for developing RHID and more recently allowing for communities of less than 60,000 population, regardless of the county size, to participate. Again, we believe this will help spur housing development in Edwardsville, allow developers to build attainable housing using this tool to build the public infrastructure needed. It grows the population base, which will help better make the case for retail development. And it continues to diversify Edwardsville property tax base. We encourage you to support the creation of an RHID in Edwardsville. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no others. It's now the opportunity of the city council to ask questions or comments. It says on your, on the paperwork here, it's either 25 townhomes or 15 single family. Do we, is there a preference one way or the other? And then same question would be, your add-on, that would be, what's the price point that we're thinking that those are going to be to the public?
You want to go ahead?
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
I think, I think that was the 15 single family, I think was an error. We've, we've always looked at this as a townhome project. Correct me if I'm wrong, but.
Well, I think we, we added that just, I mean, yes, it's always been a townhome project. That's what we believe will be brought forward. It simply gives an opportunity, for some reason, that didn't happen. And somebody did want to look at single family. It simply gives that as an option. But all, but all intent is to move forward with owner-occupied townhomes.
And price point, that would be?
Well, I, so right now, you know, price point, we're, we're talking about selling the, the lots to builders at roughly $25,000 a door. I mean, give or take, kind of depends on where the marketplace will land. Now, in, in saying that, with that price, with the builders that I've talked to, lumber's all over the place, right? I mean, it's, it went, it went up to $1,600, down to 500 this fall, and now it's back up to 1,000. But I can tell you that I delivered a similar product in DeSoto, Kansas. We did 20 townhomes, so 40 doors. Rough ballpark was the same lot price. And we were able to deliver those for about $275,000 a door. Yeah. And that, that would be, our price point would be around that range.
Mr. Scott, and I, and I, I know you weren't here for previous. So when we looked at property values in Edwardsville generally, about 60% of our single-family detached homes are below 200,000 or below. So this definitely would be a midpoint pricing for the community as a whole. So just for, for reference, yes.
Just to clarify, this is not the city agreeing to pay for any infrastructure just for the development, the RHID district. Is that correct?
Correct. It, it sets the district up, which then does allow, just like the TIP district does, then allows those increment taxes to be used for eligible expenses, which are then determined as part of a development agreement.
And then we're also not necessarily agreeing to the full 25 years. We can, we can go up to 25 years, but we're not saying 25 years at this point.
That's correct. We've been, I mean, I, you know, the cost is, is one of, but we had been looking at, and you can see by the financials, you know, about an 18-year, because the first two to three years, you aren't going to have any revenues. Just, you know, you got costs and not revenues. And then it's about a 15 years to pay out, unless the city had some other project that met, that was within the district, which we don't. I can tell you, I spent some time speaking to the folks in Dodge City. So Dodge City probably has 10 of these districts and a number of different plans. Everything from multifamily to duplexes to townhomes to even some single-family homes. And, and generally, they found that they pay off earlier than, than later. You know, I realize that's a different, Dodge City's a different environment than us. But that, you know, while they adopt the 25-year, they're, I mean, they've had some payoff in as little as eight years.
But to clarify, we're not adopting 25 years.
Correct.
Okay.
The district, by creating the district, it allows up to 25 years by statute. Unless the, the city, the attorney has, it gives us that option up to 25. And it starts with the adoption of the district, the time does.
If, if the ordinance is approved tonight, the district will start running tonight and it will run for a period of 25 years. However, at such time that all eligible costs are reimbursed, the district ends. So we control when those eligible, the way we control that is through a development agreement. So that development agreement can either cut the eligible cost reimbursement off at a certain dollar amount or at a certain time. So we could decide in the development agreement to cut that reimbursement off before 25 years.
Have we, I don't believe we've closed the public hearing.
No, we have not.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
It has been moved in second to the closed public hearing. Would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Kahar.
Yes.
Malon.
Yes.
Mayor, council members, the next item before you is ordinance number 1049. This ordinance creates the rural housing incentive district and approves the plan for the district. The statute is very clear. We need to do two things after the public hearing. The first is approving the plan. The plan that you approve tonight is basically the plan presented to us by the developer. We didn't, because we do not have a development agreement in place, I wanted to give the city a little added flexibility so we could potentially work with someone else. We're optimistic that we won't have to, but if we should, we want that flexibility. So we did make a few tweaks to the plan. So the first thing the ordinance does is it approves that plan. The second thing the ordinance does is it creates the district. So as I just mentioned, starting tonight, the district will be in place and it will run for a period of 25 years. While we've talked about a lot of how we're optimistic that we'll be able to come to terms soon with the developer, should we not? At, at, it's important to stress, as of right now, although we've talked about a lot of good things, nothing has been agreed to. The city is not committing to do anything other than create the district tonight. We're not making any commitments for infrastructure, any commitments for anything. At the same time, the developer is not, also has not made any commitments too. They've spoken a lot of good things, but before anybody's committed to do anything, we have to put those in writing. So if nothing else were to happen after tonight, which is extremely unlikely, but if nothing else were to happen, basically the district would just, whatever's there, we collect taxes for 25 years. Because there's no redevelopment agreement in place, those taxes would then, the district would end in 25 years. And whatever money it had collected, which wouldn't be much, would revert back to the county. So the ordinance, again, it approves the plan, creates the district. The next step will be working with the developer. So hopefully, we're back before you relatively soon with a development agreement for your consideration. Happy to take any questions.
Could you clarify when you said if, if nothing happens, then all the taxes revert back to the county? Could you just expand on that a little bit?
Upon the creation of the district, all incremental taxes become RHID revenues. So what that means, so we have to assume, if there's no, if there's no redevelopment agreement approved, okay, let's assume that nothing happens on this for 25 years. As we all know, taxes go up every year, but with nothing on the property, they go up at a very, you know, minimal rate. So whatever the money was collected for the next 25 years, that money can only be used to reimburse somebody for infrastructure improvements or for a developer for plan improvements. If the city makes no infrastructure improvements and we have no agreement with the developer, the money would just sit there for the term of the RHID, at which point, because it was never spent, it would be reverted to the county. Here again, what I just described, there's zero chance that will happen, but.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, when we say to the county, because the county is the taxing entity, redistribute those funds to the appropriate. So what we would have gotten, we would have still, we would have, we'll still receive. But obviously, the, these funds, if they're spent on RHID, go, they kind of stay local and get used for local. If you don't ever spend them. And it, it's the same in a, in a TIP district. If it just sits there until when those districts terminate, then if there's unspent funds, they have to be redistributed to the appropriate taxing entities on the basis that they would have been received. So it doesn't, I, I think I heard, it doesn't all go to the county and they keep, you know, if we're 25% of that, then that 25% would come back to the city and whatever, to the schools and et cetera. That, that, wherever that money would have gone to, it would still go to. Mr. Mayor, I have to make a motion to pass ordinance number 1049. An ordinance of the governing body of the city of Edwardsville, Kansas, establishing a rural housing incentive district within the public, within the city and adopting a plan for the development of housing and public facilities in such district and making certain findings in conjunction therewith, the Highland Rural Housing Incentive District.
Second. It is moved in second, and I'm going to only repeat the ordinance number. I will not repeat all the rest. The, the ordinance is to approve the ordinance number 1049. Would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Kahar.
Yes.
Malon.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda will be conduct a public hearing to consider amending funding year 2021 budget and take any necessary actions subject to that hearing.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a standing item that we addressed at the last meeting of the year, amending the fiscal, the current fiscal year budget and the funds that staff recommends that for. We have five, or five funds that we are recommending for amendment in the fiscal year 2021. Before we make a motion to open the public hearing, I will go through those. The special highway fund, we're making a recommendation to increase that budget authority from 195,000 to 350,000 or an increase of 160,000. The two large projects that came out of this fund that are, the reason for the amendment are the surface seal program, or the striping portion of the surface seal program, which started this year, as well as the 102nd Street full-depth repairs. We also have a $125,000 transfer to debt, which was in the original budget, but that will hit this quarter. Projected to have a year-end fund balance of $165,000 in this fund. I mentioned the transfer to debt. To note that this is the last year, I should say, 20, fiscal year 2022, the adopted budget does not include a transfer to debt from this fund, rather focusing on street projects similar to 102nd and the surface seal program and things of that nature. The special event fund, we're making a recommendation to increase the budget authority 6,300 from 19,700 to 26,000. The reason being is we are using that fund more and more for, it was originally set up as a, essentially the fund for Autumn Fest and all of the money was in and out related to Autumn Fest. We've started to use that fund more and more for some of our other community events, so it's not affecting the general fund park budget. Those events like last weekend's tree lighting ceremony, our upcoming holiday shop charity event, the spooky express, we're just kind of diversifying the uses of these funds rather than have it focused just on Autumn Fest, so that does increase some additional expenses. The solid waste fund, we are making a recommendation to increase that authority by 9,400. The reason being, if you remember, at the beginning of the year, we withheld payment from Waste Management because of their service failures related to the bulky item pickup and the close of their contract. So there was a period of, you know, six to eight weeks there where we were withholding payment from Waste Management as that contract ended. But because we, we, if you remember those discussions, there was some payment made to Waste Management to close out that contract. Those funds affected the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget rather than the fiscal year 2020 budget. So that's the largest unbudgeted expense in that item. In the technology fund, asking for a $7,000 increase to the budget authority, those are mostly related to citywide tech issues. We do have a standing service contract that, that deals with a lot of our, our hosting and some of those maintenance items. There are some maintenance items that spring up every year that are unanticipated, that this fund supports. We did have a, a citywide network update to windows that affected some, some functionality on some of the computers, which required some, some technical assistance in that area. And then special sales tax, we're requesting to increase that budget authority by $50,691. Additional spending is required out of this fund to make up the additional costs related to the surface seal program, as well as, if you remember, we made the recommendation earlier this year to purchase the parks and rec vehicles outright rather than financing, which will save us in the long, long run from those financing costs. We're expected to have a year-end fund balance of that fund of $211,000. None of these funds and amendments to these funds will affect any taxing levies. They're all essentially self-supported funds. At this point, I'd recommend opening the public hearing.
Make a motion to open a public hearing considering, to consider amending the 2021 annual budget and take any actions, any necessary actions.
Second.
It has been moved in second to open up a public hearing on the funding for 2021 budget and any necessary actions. Would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Kahar.
Yes.
Malon.
Yes.
Mayor, I would just, the only additional comment that I would make, and Zach does a great job with the budget and helping to manage it along with, with Sean, our finance director. You know, one of the things we always look at this time of year is to ensure that we'll be in compliance with state statutes on both budgets. So right, you, you, if you exceed budgets and funds like this, even though we have the revenues available, but if the expenditure side goes over what you budgeted, then in your audit, you get, you know, a note for violation of the, of the Budget Act. And then the other piece is the cash portion, right, which you can't spend for things which you don't have. Obviously, in all of these, we have the funds. It's just a matter of ensuring we do not violate the Budget Act of the state of Kansas. And so this is a fairly typical action that cities do across the state to ensure their compliance. Again, you notice that typically our, our self-supporting funds, seldom do we have a general fund adjustment or, or, you know, those type, any of the tax-supported bonds.
And to Mr. Webb's comments, as we've discussed in our budget reviews earlier this year and throughout the year, sales taxes and use taxes have come in pretty strongly, which have helped the fund balance in the special sales tax. And then in special highway, those funds are always, we receive those estimates from outside groups that are always kind of lowballed, so there is additional revenue in there.
Thank you for your comments. Suppose it might sound kind of silly, but is there anyone in the public who wishes to make comment or question? If not, it is now open for the council to ask questions or comments.
I have a question on the solid waste. If we withheld funds from Waste Management and we paid KC Disposal to, to fill in their gap, so KC Disposal, we spent $9,400 more overall because of, we withheld and then there was an additional charge?
There was the, we had charged it at the beginning of the year, and this isn't going to make up the entire 94, 9,400. But if you remember, we paid KC Disposal an additional amount to shore up those, the, the addresses that weren't serviced for the addresses that weren't serviced for the bulky item pickup. I believe that was 2,000, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but there was a portion of the, the final contracted monthly amount paid to Waste Management that was not paid, which is, was around that $20,000 mark, which was not paid in December of 2020. That was withheld into January, and I'd have to see, I'd have to refer to the record to see exactly what was paid, but that amount, which was typically, that $20,000, which was typically paid in December of the fiscal year 2020, a portion of that was paid in fiscal, in January, or I believe February of the fiscal year 2021. I'd have to, I'd have to refer to see what exactly that amount was, but it was not the full, regular monthly contracted amount.
Simply, we, obviously, we make payments monthly to our contractor for solid waste, whoever that is. And because of that switch over and those issues, payments we would have made in 2020 to Waste Management, we didn't make them in 2020. We made them in 2021. So again, it's not the revenue piece of it, it's just that the expenditure, we didn't, we didn't budget for the assumption that we would be making kind of a final payment to Waste Management in, you know, even in 2020 or 2021, when we adopted the budget in 2019, of August of 2019, so.
So in reality, it's, it's less than the 20,000.
Yes.
And, and so we paid a portion of it out in the 9,400 as well.
And if you'll also remember too, when we adopted the budget for fiscal year 2021, we hadn't yet selected our 2022 and onward contractors, so some of those costs were, were some estimates built in there, so it wasn't a, a hard firm expenditure amount based on any contractual language that was in there, it was based on the research that we were presenting and discussing at that time.
But none of this changes our fund balance or our bank account or anything?
No, it would not, I mean, as far as our fund balance policies, cash pol, you know, those, we'll still maintain balances in each of these, again, it's just the expenditure side of it. Obviously, something like the, the street fund, what we maybe budgeted early in, you know, in 2021, we spent more than we budgeted, so our overall fund balance may be less than we initially budgeted, but we spent it on those road projects and we had the funds to do it. So we, we knew, for example, on the street, the special highway fund, we were effectively spending down some of the fund balance in order to do the project, but we had built that fund balance up partially because of things that didn't happen in, in 2020, COVID, et cetera, so.
Yeah, I've got our budget for, or adopted budget from fiscal year 2021, and the, and just to reference the special highway fund, what was approved in 2020 was the 195, or excuse me, 20, in 2020 for the 2021 budget is the $195,000 worth of expenditures, and we, we are, we're going to be spending closer to 350,000 because of those additional projects.
Money well spent.
Yes.
And to, to your point about the fund balance, our estimated fund balance at the time of budget adoption for special highway fund was $235,000. Obviously, we spent more, so that fund balance is going to go down, but that is still healthy amount, about 165,000 is what we're anticipating.
Did we end up not paying Waste Management the full amount since they skipped several weeks of picking up the trash and recycling?
Correct, they weren't paid the full amount that they had originally billed us, correct.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
It has been moved in second to close public hearing. Would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
And, and there's no action to be taken?
Uh, no, you will need to accept the or adopt the amended budget as presented, that would be the, or the certificate of budget amendment.
Adopt the amended budget.
Yes, sir, and it does require a vote of the governing body, so I will have the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we adopt the amended certificate, or certificate for calendar year 2021 with those amounts that were discussed previously.
Second.
It has been moved in second to adopt the amended budget for 2021. Would the clerk please call roll?
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is to consider ordinance number 1050, amending Appendix A fee schedule of the Edwardville Code of Ordinances.
We make tag team this morning.
Similar to the last item, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a standing item in our last meeting in December, where we amend the fee schedule, if it's necessary. We do have, it's a, it's a more, I'll say substantial update than what is typically done in the past, and that's largely due to the updates to the planning fees and development-related fees that are noted in the agenda memo and in the attachment to the ordinance. On the utility side of things, we are recommending that the solid waste charges be changed to 1870 per month from 18, excuse me, 1870 a month, essentially a 2.4%, 2.4% increase to that current rate. This equates to a monthly increase of about 45 cents for each residential customer per month. For sewer charges, we're recommending a 1.5% increase to the variable rate, so not the standing rate. This equates to a 40 cent per month increase. The, on the solid waste charges, that is in keeping with the contractual language that we have with KC Disposal, that allows for a 1.5% increase to their charges to us. The reason it's not just a one-for-one increase is because we use that fund to support other programs like the, the costs associated with bulky item curbside pickup and our bulky item citywide cleanup that happens in the spring. For the sewer charges, these increases are meant primarily to keep pace with the rising wastewater costs and charges at the county level. So to avoid, costs on the county level are going up for their county customers. At some point, that's going to affect the, the rate that is charged to the city. And to avoid a large, you know, seven or eight percent increase whenever that time does come, this kind of slowly rats its up that, so the, the impact isn't as great. I may turn over to the city manager for his comments on development-related fees.
I, I would just note on the sewer fee, I was just running the number real quick with the, at least the last schedule I had from the UG. And so an individual who used 6,000 gallons of, of sewer, paying about $71.08 in comparison, a similar customer, we use CCF, is around $48.53, so just for comparison, we're still significantly lower. But we do know at some point our wholesale contract will get adjusted. So on the development side, what's really happened is, is the way we, we worked previously, you know, even if I go way back, but we typically had our planner was contracted and our engineer was contracted, and then we, we had a fee in-house. And probably the number one complaint we got was, well, I do a project, and then two or three months later, I, I get a bill for all of that stuff, right? And, and, you know, some of the big companies, it wasn't a big deal, but for most of your people, they, they just didn't know they were going to have these costs. So as we were looking to update this, and of course, we pulled planning in-house, we decided the best way to do that was to get with our engineer, because that's the one thing we still have outsourced, and get it to where we could have a fixed rate for those services. So whether it's plating, or zoning, or development plans, we created a rate in conjunction with the engineer to say, okay, we know it's going to take us two hours to work on this on average, how many hours is it going to take you? And created the rate schedule that you, you see in there. We also compared that to our other communities around us, and we're kind of in the middle. So everybody does it a little bit different. You know, for example, so far, the UG, they don't even charge, I think it's for preliminary plats or plaits. I mean, they just had built it in somewhere else. But they charge, you know, a lot more for, say, development planning. So that was really the purpose around what you see in here on the development fees, is it sets it, and so when a developer comes in, they know exactly what they're going to pay. There'll be times when probably us and/or the engineer will have less time in it, and there'll be times when we'll have more time in it and won't fully recover our costs. But part of the development process in and of itself helps to, you know, cover the cost down the road as those projects come on board and, and we, we work with it. We get very good feedback from the development community on our processes and speed and things of that nature. Most of the other charges really have stayed the same. We've restructured the Attachment A so that now, if you see something like Article 10 subdivision-related fees, if you go to our Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, in our Code of Ordinances is subdivision or, or whatever chapter, so we've tied it to the chapter. That's why you see some that just say reserve, because there's no fees associated with that particular area. You know, we don't have any fees related to taxation or, or relate, traffic-related fees outside of what the court charges. So, so right now, there's not a fee related to that section. So really, it's a change in the structure. Again, setting up the fees so they're consistent for development community and still gives us the opportunity to recoup our cost. And we got rid of some fees that just aren't even, you know, they were just in our fee ordinance, they were just left over. And so that's the reason we've really done the entire chapter or Appendix Exhibit A, I keep Exhibit A, which is on our Code of Ordinances. So if you go to the Code of Ordinances online and you wanted to look up what a building permit would cost me, you could go to that section, you would see, you know, I'm building X, Y, and Z, and I would know what my building permit, or I'm getting a driveway permit, or those types of things. So we try to make our fees very open, transparent to, to the public. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the structure or any of the fees. Again, building-related fees pretty much stayed the same. We added a couple in there, one of them that we've had a lot was on finish out. So you get these buildings that are 10, 15, 20,000, they lease out part of it, they lease out another part, they lease out another part of it. So they pay a building fee when they build it, but because it's not always finished, then later on, somebody comes along to finish it, and we didn't really have a fee schedule. So that's, that's kind of a new part of the building permit fee schedule. Again, on our building permit fees, we have three components. There's, there's a plan review and there's inspections, those are directly collected and reimbursed to our third-party contractor. So the only thing we keep is the permit fee. So that is the offset, the cost of, of our permit specialist, our planner, anything in-house that we may have, sometimes the public work director. So that's, you know, that's the small, that's the small portion of the fee. And in reality, probably doesn't cover, you know, the full cost of what it costs, but that's part of, you know, what we do as a business. Happy to answer questions.
When we're looking at inspection, so if somebody's getting a roof permit and they're paying $100 for an inspection, do we have someone that's actually inspecting the roof and making sure it's safe, or what all does that entail, what are they paying for?
Well, generally, what they're inspecting for, I mean, yes, the inspector is to go out there, they're generally inspecting for some of the components of it, like, do they have ice shield on it, which is a requirement? They're, you know, they're, they're looking at the, the broad project. They're probably not climbing around on all the roof and checking all the nails to make them, and make sure they're all set. But more from a ground, generally a ground, now on commercial roofs, that's different, right? So in commercial roofs, yes, they, they've got to get on the roof and walk it and, and, you know, check it and make sure drains and things like that. But generally, on your residential roofs, they're, it's a pretty, you know, from the ground, they, they try to inspect it at the point they tear off the roofing so they can see if there's any underlayment, you know, the wood, if there's any rotted wood on it. And then a final inspection, once the project's done, to make sure basically, you know, it's complete and done. Those are the two inspections.
And is the person doing the inspections qualified, like they know the building process, and I've done this?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The person doing the inspections, are they qualified, like they've done roofs and all these buildings?
Yeah, our, our contract requires, so we have, we actually have generally two different inspectors here. And so a commer, a person who's licensed to do commercial work has to look at commercial work. For example, our, our Mark, that was last, Manville, he, he's actually a certified building officer. So it means he basically has both residential commercial inspection qualification, but that is part of our contract. It's actually through the Mid-America Regional Council, but that contract says the person conducting the inspections is licensed to perform those inspections. That was a problem we had, I mean, going back certainly a number of years, one of the reasons we went to contracted, because it's very hard to keep a person on staff who can go out and inspect a 300,000 square foot warehouse and then, you know, walk over and maybe look at somebody adding a door and a deck to a house, I mean, and, and, and keep up the level of knowledge to, to do that. So you need people that are doing this on a daily basis. That, that's what IBS does for us.
Um, on, a little bit later on the court costs.
Yes.
If someone gets a ticket from, you know, a traffic ticket.
Right.
And they pay the fee and don't, so they're not using our court's time or the judge's time. Are they still having to pay the court fee, or is that being waived since they're not taking the court?
Yes, they still have to pay the court fee because most of that goes to the state. So the court fee and the, and the technology fee, so on any conviction, there is a, there is a court fee and technology fee. I think there is some, some difference if it's just like a no seatbelt infraction, there may be a lesser fee, but anything, anything that's conviction, state, we have to file the state has a court fee because I don't know what portion of that, but probably more than half of that goes to the state, and we still have to process all the court stuff. So yes, they don't have to physically go to court to be assessed.
Okay, so that's a state fee, we're not setting that the state imposes on?
Well, some of that fee stays locally and some of that fee goes to the state. Where it says court fee, is that what you refer to specifically? Yeah, so a portion goes to the state by law and a portion is retained by us because we still have to process, we have to process a conviction, whether they went to municipal court or whether they came in and paid a ticket, we still have to process it effectively the same way. Obviously, if they go to court, it really costs even more, but, but the court cost is assessed on any conviction. So if you come in and plead guilty to it, and you say, I'm going to, whatever that fine is, you'll pay the court cost plus the fine. If you want to have it amended, then there's, generally, you pay the court cost plus an amendment fee, which I think, and don't hold me, the judge said so, but I believe it's two times the fine amount, which is, which is typical, just the fine portion, which is what most cities do, it's the court cost plus two times the fine. You can amend a moving violation to a non-moving violation. And that is, quite honestly, that can be done at the court, court level, so we, you know, if that's what somebody wants to do, we, we certainly encourage them to come to the court first. So they, you know, quite honestly, the court process, I think, you saw, I mean, it's a process and it can take a lot of time out of a person's day, and we understand that, trying to make it as easy as possible.
Right, and that's why I was just wondering if we should try to incentivize those who aren't taking the court's time and maybe making a difference there.
Yeah.
Chief, did you have a thought on that?
My only suggestion is that doesn't cover one tenth of administrative costs, paper, files, all of this stuff. And quite frankly, conviction is conviction, so there is some language that suggests that we owe certain monies to the state for judges' training, brain trauma, law enforcement training, all the things that are scattered thoroughly are required to pay. So simply paying online or at the window of court cost to the city quite a bit. So quite frankly, we have to pay some of these fees, the convictions, the, whether you're no, no contest, pleading guilty, whatever it might be, not coming to court and you're making them close payments, however, whatever method you're using, still a cost to the city, just a straight, you know. Thus, we should recoup some of those costs as much as we can because it's an expensive process. Thus, we should recoup some of those costs as much as we can because it's an expensive process from start to finish. And again, I think statute for it, there are some required payments that we have to pay this, that, forty-five, whatever, forty-seven.
Forty-one, forty-one fifty.
Cover some of those costs plus a little bit of the city.
I I would say that fee is not, that is not a change from the current year. And I don't believe it's changed in probably two or three years. I'd have to go back. But it's been some time since we we look at that. We kind of, you know, we we kind of follow what other courts are doing, where they're at. You know, it's not a competitive market, but I mean, at the same time, we don't want to be just, you know, out of out of the rain. But we've looked at that a number of times. And we we generally fall probably towards the middle to middle low on most of things that we charge fees for. If I took them as a whole.
I have another kind of odd question. On page eighty-two, section A four point zero zero six is fees for sexually oriented businesses.
All right. So here's here's, I know, this one always comes up. So so I'm sure some of y'all remember many years ago, about probably 20 years ago, there was a proposal to put a gentleman's club, i.e. a sexually oriented business in the city. Some of these were adopted at that time. But we still have to provide under, right under zoning law, you still have certain rights and that's one of them. So by taking the fee away, if then somebody came in and wanted to go through that process, we wouldn't have fees there. And that then potentially leaves us open to somebody opening a business and not thinking there's any fee. So having it in the ordinance really address that. And then the the license types are by types of facility. So I can say we do not have any sexually oriented businesses in the city and there are no sexually oriented oriented business being proposed that I'm aware of. And they would have to go through a fairly lengthy process to get to that point.
Would it be beneficial to raise that amount to make it less attractive to to start one of those businesses here?
We can look at that. I I will say, and I don't remember, it was a little before my time. I know there was quite a bit of, wouldn't say litigation, but quite a bit of legal work done on the fees and the structures and what is a business and why you can or can't do it. We'd have to go back and look at that and it may be something we want to come back and propose at a future time. I don't think I would necessarily change it. I mean, it's not an area we were changing in this group. I mean, it's an existing, those fees are existing at those existing amount. But if you'd like us to come take a look at that, I again, I think there's some, I think there's probably some legal issues that have, you know, I mean, fortunately, there's, you know, things of, you know, this is get into your free speech and do you get into all these kind of constitutional legal issues? And I think that's what they ran into back then. And I I don't know if anybody else was around here that went through that. I was not. I just know it was kind of in place.
We dealt with zoning on that.
Huh?
Kind of make stringent zoning rules.
Yeah, there's a whole series of zoning rules around too, right? I mean, it's a special use permit. It has to be in, you know, I think in an industrial zone, there has to be some, a number of items to go through even to build one.
So maybe going through zoning would be more direct.
Oh, yeah.
I think about 20 years ago, we had it to where they could build one in the middle of Mission Creek where the railroad pressle is.
I think some of that property.
It's kind of a joke.
I think some of that property out to the to that that end of town got rezoned around that topic is what I recall.
I just think it would be unfortunate for us to make money off of the detriment of others. And so, yeah, if we can maybe keep a look at that, might maybe going through planning and zoning would be the better route. But just keeping that in mind, I saw it pop up on the list and I thought.
I I figured it would. It generally does when we get to that. Matter of fact, the city clerk asked the very same question to me and says, why do we have that? We don't have any of these. Let's get rid of it. I don't disagree, but for the reasons I've stated. I don't I don't want somebody to come in and then say, I want a license and since there's no fee, I don't have to pay anything.
On the sewer charges.
Yes.
Have we ever considered commercial charging more on the commercial side because of, you know, how much they put through our sewer system? I mean, we're charging in the same increase.
Right.
It just almost doesn't seem like that's fair to the citizen that's using very little compared to a commercial, you know, business that has a lot more, you know, sewer usage.
Right. Well, I I will say this, a lot of our commercial users at this point are not our, not always our biggest users. So your big users are ones like the nursing home. The we treat, it's a little bit different. We treat the mobile home complex because they have a master meter. But some of your industrial locations, just right, they don't, they're not processing water. A place like Lineage uses a great deal of water, places that have refrigeration typically. And some of those have a, what's called a set off meter, right? Most of the places that have landscaping that they water will separate their, they'll either get a separate meter or again, what's called a set off meter. So they'll meter it separately so they don't have to pay sewer charges on watering grass, which is the same concept of a winter average for residential. So on the residential side, you know, we we use a winter averaging, which is so we look at four month period is it three and is it December, January, February? So we we look at the charge from December, January, February, what amount of water usage? And then that sets their rate for all year. So because most individuals on their homes won't separate out a meter for watering grass, filling swimming pools or playing out, you know, with the host. So they they're not, they're not charged for that. On the commercial side, there's no averaging of their bill. They use it, they pay. So we we could go back and look again at, I mean, it may be something to look at. We we haven't touched it in the last couple of years, other than just kind of this incremental increase. And we've done it in the variable rate. So we're a little, we're a little higher on this, on the on the base rate than some of our surroundings, but significantly less than the variable rate. Quite honestly, like most utility, a lot of utilities took the approach back in the day. We'll have a really small fixed rate and then we'll put it all in the variable rate. Well, as you've gotten into energy conservation and efficiencies and things like that, especially in the electric world. Right? People put solar on and all that and they start taking away all their variable rate, but yet they still got poles to pay for plants and all that. So we're a little bit higher on the base rate than other places, but the variable rate will probably be more competitive than others. We can certainly come back at a future time and and, you know, redo that rates. We've not done a formal rate study because we only do collections, right? We're we're collecting it and transporting it and then we have two wholesale meters. And so we pay unified government a rate for that. It could be, it's mixed, right? It has both residential and commercial wasted. Now, if a customer has specialized waste, then they do have to go through the unified government to get separate permits. So as an example, like an INX where they have paints and things like that, they are subject to additional testing and if they have certain components in their their stream, then they have to pay an additional fee, but it paid directly to the UG because it really impacts the the treatment side, not necessarily the collection side. And quite honestly, we don't have the skill set to manage that. And so that's part of our contract. They manage those, what would be considered a true industrial customers. Certainly.
Chief Widdam, do we have a few frequent fires on false alarms?
That's not just on the fire, that's also definitely any of those that are on. So with the presented, uh, we're still, we still. It's by the first three or three, um, and it's right, we'll increase there. You also remember once we implemented this, we dropped our false alarm, we started all the 60%. We have no major violators. The last one, we take our system, it's actually a figure, I would say, to turn to gain compliance more than it is.
Okay, great.
That is one of the ones where we we actually try to incentivize people, as you can see, right? We want them to get their alarm registered because the problem is, you know, it's the middle of the night and the alarm's going off and the building's locked up. Who do you call and how do you get, I mean, they have access to that, but it's only as good as what they provide to us. And we went through a period when we adopted this where people didn't register. They had alarm problems, both the police and fireside. I think once we adopted this, it greatly reduced it. I mean, we still have a few, but I think it's pretty rare from what I understand, which is good. We don't want to go to false alarms.
Can you tell me the difference in if someone's building like an outbuilding? Is it the same fees as building a house for plan review inspections permit?
We're talking about residential. Is that what we're talking about?
Well, yeah, residential, like a home versus like an outbuilding, that would just be like a metal building.
So if you look there on, I think it's page seventy-eight, page three of the fee schedule, you have new construction addition, right? So that's a, like, we have one where they're adding a new master bedroom bathroom, et cetera. They would fall under that addition, right? So new construction dish or a new home. If they're building just a detached accessory building, we have a person who's building a garage right now. Right? It's detached, detached to the house. They would fall down there under detached accessory structure. And those only apply when you get, and partially because of the building code, only apply when they're over 400 square feet. So so somebody brings in, you know, just wants to build a shed to put their lawn mowers in and stuff like that. I mean, unless they fancy it up and make it into a, you know, a seat, a she shed or whatever that is with lights, electricity and a sink, you know, then then they're going to be, but but typically under 400 square feet, certainly large enough for most people for their, you know, their lawnmower or their their, you know, maybe the things in their backyard, et cetera. So.
Okay. And otherwise it'd be like 350 is what I'm looking at.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Um, the, I think, last question that I have is on the solid waste charges. It looks like the city contract allows for a one and a half percent annual increase, but we're looking at close to double that in our increase, 2.47%. Why are we, why are we jumping that much higher?
The reason it's not a one for one increase is that we, the the fees that we charge to our customers don't only go, we're not just simply the pass through to the contractor. We use those funds to also pay for the costs associated with dumpster rental for the citywide cleanup, which could fluctuate depending on those costs and how much we get year after year, as well as the costs associated with the with the bulky item cleanup. So those additional events, as well as the billing and the postage costs, which aren't factored into, those aren't charges that are charged by the contractor to us. We incur those costs and we need to capture them from the, from from customers.
Okay. And that's what will be about the forty-five cents a month?
Essentially, I mean, I can, I could probably break that down further, but I mean, that's that's going to cover some of the increases. The postage has gone up as well. And doing some comparisons to some of our peer communities, you know, for our level of service, it's pretty, the only, the only community less than 10,000 in our neck of the woods that I could find that had weekly pickup, week weekly recycling and trash pickup and a 95 gallon for trash and a 65 gallon for recycling that was less expensive than us was Baser. And that's largely due to their, they've got, they're real dense. They've got a lot of density. So all their neighborhoods are all packed in together, which is really where you get a lot of those cost savings, which is why we floated the idea to the mobile home park to, if they wanted to opt in and that was something they didn't want to consider at that time, at last year when we were searching around for the contract. Because that density really affects the, you know, they they can get 20 addresses in a certain amount of space versus four addresses. You know, your costs are going to be, their costs are going to be less. We unfortunately just don't have that kind of density that Baser has. But in the other communities that we looked at, Tongan Oxy, for example, charges 2050 per month and they only have every other week recycling. Similar to Yudora, they only have every other week recycling and they charge 1950. So considering our service levels, we are, we're pretty affordable compared to communities in the metro and a little bit outside the metro who have got similar makeup to us. A little bit more context, so I serve on the Wyandotte County Solid Waste Committee and they've been going through their solid waste master plan, which is in draft form right now. And the last meeting that we had with the group was essentially telling, and this is a committee largely for the unified government in Kansas City, Kansas, solid waste contract. They're by and large, and I'm simplifying it a lot, but their recommendation, they're, they, UG hires some contractors to look at their solid waste service and provide recommendation to it. Their recommendation was essentially you guys should be doing what Edwardville's doing in terms of level of recycling for diversion away from the landfill and as well as our fee structure as far as not having it be, not having just kind of a free for all as far as bulky item pickup and things like that. Because those are, those are your driving, your cost that you are paying to the contractor. So I expect to see, that plan's still in draft form, but based on how those conversations are going, it it seems like their contractor's recommendation is to construct a service that is more similar to kind of what we are offering. We're kind of at the high mark for diversion from the landfill, largely because of our weekly recycling program. And we, that's been the case since we started it. It's kind of the high watermark in the in the entire county that we do a really good job of that.
Thank you.
So Mayor, if there's, I mean, certainly happy to answer any questions. Again, it's possible. We'll be back throughout the year. I know Parks and the CPPS Board is looking at some of their fees. Something new may come around, et cetera. So it, you know, it's, it's, we try to do this once a year and try to capture all of them. You know, honestly, if you're going to make change, making change once, I mean, none of us like change and when you get change, it just, you know, generally once, one change versus having eight or 10 changes throughout the year. So we try to make these changes once. Again, a lot of this one, it's just the format as much as anything else. So that going forward, we just kind of have that formatted place and and we'll continue to work from there. Yet happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we recommend adoption of ordinance 1050 by basically amending appendix A, the fee schedule. This will basically repeal and replace the the current schedule as you see it today, replacing with this one.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 1050 amending the appendix A fee schedule.
Second.
It has been moved in second to adopt ordinance number 1050 amending appendix A fee schedule for the city of Edredville. Could the clerk please follow?
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kahar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Mayor, I just, I think you you have a written report. Just a couple of things I would like to add. Number one, I want to thank Zach and the Parks team and the fire and really everybody on the Christmas tree lighting. Was the mayor, this this mayor's last Christmas tree lighting and Mayor-elect Kahar will get the honors next year. So I just want to thank all of the, everybody for that work and for all of those that were able to attend. You know, there's a lot of behind the scenes that happens with all of those. And so everybody from Laura up front to various people helped make that happen. So I wanted to to thank them. And I did, I I don't know if I've got this all out yet, but we are planning. I believe I've raised this before, but I'll raise it again. On January 7th, Friday, from one to three, we will have an kind of an official mayor's going away. So we will invite, you know, those persons in other cities and those groups and committees that the mayor served on. So it'll be kind of a come and go. We'll have refreshments, et cetera, and I'm sure probably some prepared remarks. So if you could pencil that on your calendars, I would appreciate it. Otherwise, we'll take any questions that the council may have.
Zach, have you got anything further to add?
Yeah, just to echo the thanks to all the departments who assisted with this weekend's activities and everybody who showed up. Really great activity. We changed up the format a little bit and we're hoping to expand that even more next year. Chief Widdam gave me some metrics earlier today. Apparently we've served 1,000. Uh, Chief Wyndham gave me some metrics earlier today. Apparently we served one thousand pancakes, including the ones that we took over to the high rises and eight hundred sausage links. So, uh, that was for the Kringle cakes on that morning, which was staffed pretty much by our, our Mike Martin, who was dressed up like the Grinch, I believe, for that portion of it, and our fire department folks. So again, a big thanks to everybody who helped out with all the logistics coming together for that event.
That, did that include the two foot diameter pancake? Was that one or like five?
That was just one. That's how they get at the end of the day. We got a lot of batter we gotta get through. It's, they get bigger and bigger.
Okay, um, now is the time for council comments and we're gonna start with you for being a new guy.
Perfect. Appreciate that. Well, thank you, Mayor, for the appointment and opportunity to further serve my community. Really looking forward to that. I guess like we talked earlier, I have been with the planning commission five years this January and enjoyed that, learned a lot and still learn every day. Uh, but, but really enjoy working with each and every one of you, pass and looking forward to the ones I haven't worked with yet. I know we've volunteered off and on and, and helped wherever we could. So really looking forward to that and I appreciate it again. Uh, I realize I didn't get here the traditional pub, uh, within the public vote. Uh, I realize that, but I make a promise and commitment to our Edwardsville citizens that I will keep our community's best interests at heart in making decisions. I think that's important. My family is here, Denise Scott, my daughter Madison, and hopefully my future son-in-law. Hopefully, make sure you get a picture there.
It's been a public announcement now.
We've been in the community twenty years and really enjoy it and, uh, this is home, you know? And, uh, I'm, I'm proud to be up here and to help wherever I can. And I'll ask student questions. Uh, but I want to do the best I can for, for our community and for our citizens of, of Edwardsville, of Edwardsville, excuse me. Um, again, Mr. Mayor, thank you again for this appointment and this opportunity. Thank you, thank you.
Martin?
Um, Greg, welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Highest respect for anybody that signs up, volunteers or comes forward to serve their community because it is a, we have found it, many of the boards, we can't find people to come serve on these boards. So hats off to you. It's a, it's a big learning experience. I don't feel like you have a silly question because there is no silly question. So welcome aboard. Um, Zach and all that's involved with the Ho-Ho Express, I know there were several people. Such a wonderful reception in Williamson Fire, I think the whole community. I know the weather worked out again too, but like Mike mentioned, there is a lot of work done before the event even takes place and all the departments, I think, had people involved. So well-received, well-received. I do have a comment. Um, I think I read in the Hot Shot Newsletter about the administrative staff is working to secure a standing date and location for the, a local representative that, from the community health council in Wyandotte County to help Edwardsville residents. Did I read on there that they're gonna be in Bonner?
Correct. So the Community Health Foundation of Wyandotte County will have a standing office hours in Bonner Springs and will, that's essentially a meetings pace for them, but he will be, as I understand it, canvassing both communities for, to help get folks in, in touch with resources related to rent or utility assistance or things like that. So whenever we found out about that, um, we reached out to the, the individual, his name is Alec, um, about setting up a permanent space in Edwardsville, office space in Edwardsville and meeting space. So we can essentially have office space in two, in both communities.
So you are looking, that was my question. I was gonna, can we get him in Edwardsville?
We, I think we will. I think he just needs to run it up his chain and all we need to, we've got, we can, you know, we can have him stationed in the training room or make some space for him at City Hall. So that's the intention. Uh, I, I don't even know if he started in Bonner Springs yet, quite frankly, quite honestly. We, we found out about it after the fact. And once we did, we reached out and see if we could.
What a wonderful resource for, thank you.
I think it's gonna, yeah, I think it'll work out well, but.
That needs to be very well advertised too.
Once it's, once we have a standing date and a time and get a better handle on his schedule, which I'm not, again, I don't think the program's officially started, but once it does and he has a better handle on his schedule, then we'll make sure to advertise that.
Perfect. Thank you. And wish everybody a safe and Merry Christmas holidays. Thank you. Weather's been holding out good. Dusty, we're not gonna need those plows, are we? Not this year. Not this year. Thank you.
Karen?
First of all, Greg, I'd welcome you to the council. I know that you're a dedicated Edwardsville resident and I think that I'm looking forward to having you on the council with us. Thank you for accepting that appointment. Thank you. Um, Mike, I got a couple of little comments. They might mean something and they might not. But on the roundabout, the rumor mill has it, and probably a council member shouldn't say rumor mill, is that KDOT is actually who's holding up the opening of that? Is there any way that we can request that they try and open that a little bit sooner? Because driving by there, it looks like it's just the same as ready to go. Or am I missing something?
Well, I, I will say that both Dusty and I have, have been strongly encouraging that. So yeah. Ultimately, it is a KDOT project. KDOT, you know, makes those final decisions. Uh, the, you know, the contractor is up there, uh, you know, sometimes part of the day. Um, and so, I mean, there is some activity. Obviously, they're down to the finishing touches, but there are some things, and I, and I know, you know, you look and it looks all good, but the last time I was up there, there was no traffic signs up there, right? And, and, and we may not think that's important, but it's, it, it is important. So, uh, I know we have a meeting on Wednesday to do the walkthrough and it looks like Dusty's coming up. So he's been in, he's been in direct contact. But I will say that we, we've on several occasions between Dusty and I and with, with KDOT and the contractor say, what, what can we do to, you know, get this thing open? I mean, early on, we even, you know, talked about when we weren't sure about paving was, you know, could we pave one side of the road and keep the middle lines closed? I mean, so it hasn't, i- it's not gone without notice in trying to get it done. I will say that, you know, in the original contract, it had, it had a December completion date, uh, on it. So we're not really past there, uh, but certainly trying to get it done. So I'll let Dusty fill in.
Yeah, just to reiterate, I guess, some of that, you know, of course, in the beginning, we had trouble with utility lines getting moved. Um, we did trees really early. We got trees. That was kind of Michael's initiative there. You get the trees out and get things rolling. Well, then ever you never got them rolling and then, um, so that pushed us back. We had troubles with BPU moving some lines and so that pushed us back. So we are still at a place where the contractor is, is trying to finish. Like today, there's rolls of sod that tall sitting out alongside the road. You really can't open traffic when that stuff's out there. And the contractor bid this project to be working on a, you know, uninhibited by traffic or whatever. So that's a lot of, but KDOT will have to do their final walkthrough, but hopefully, we've been working with the contractor, our inspector's been working with the contractor. So kind of they know what things we're seeing that might be on that punch list too. So hopefully that will, um, make it move faster. But we know by Christmas, we can guarantee that.
Right.
And I don't usually guarantee anything, if you know what I mean.
Dusty may be out moving things.
I appreciate, you know, that you're explaining that to us, but my, my problem is that, you know, if we do have people that are cheating and going across that and, and, you know, actually taking the chance of getting their tickets and everything, it's, it's just kind of, I mean, you know, it's hard to not want to drive on something like that and when it is so close. And, you know, that's just my concern with it. And I think that, that our citizens really deserve to have that thing open sooner than later. But that's where I stand on that. The other thing, while you're standing there, I always mentioned something to Mike about the intersection of Fourth Street and Thirty-two Highway and possibly some kind of temporary striping for the left turn, straight ahead, right turn, or maybe a, possibly a sign up there. I think when people come from out of town and they're going northbound and want to get on Thirty-two, they might not understand the way those lanes work up there, where you've got the straight ahead, left turn or the, the left turn only and the straight ahead right turn. I think that something might ought to be done about that. Just a thought that I had.
We've reached, I've reached out to the ones involved in doing that. Haven't made much progress yet on that. Um, I know some of it was dirt, but there is, the patch that they did is over that left one. So we'll continue to look into that.
I didn't know, maybe there could just be a sign up there or something, you know? It's, it's a potential, you know, a sign. I, you know, I mean, uh, you know, like, now it's gonna be on the rights, you know, it'd be a typical sign on the right side that shows how the road, you know, traffic's supposed to go. The, the markings on the road are probably more effective for most people.
Yeah. Well, maybe, I hate to say this, but it may be closing again some this winter to work on that storm, storm drain or some form of closure along the two. So bear with us on that, please, too.
Pretty, you know, pretty excited about the silent crossings, you know, on, on the Ninety-eight Street and the Swings to Road up there that they're working on. They're making some pretty good progress, it looks like. The next thing I'm gonna say is, um, I was gonna ask Mr. Webb about CARES Act funding, and I had mentioned that to you today, but is there any way that we can get some definitions of where some of that money could be spent appropriately? I know you said that they're not really given, they given the money, but they haven't really given the instructions on where it could be spent.
Yeah. So there is, and Zach's been staying on top of this really well. So, so there's different things. We have the, what, what we referred to as the CARES Act, as you recall. And, and, uh, we, we expended our CARES dollars, uh, but it created other dollars that are available for. So, so CARES, if you think about CARES Act, that, that piece is done. Then it's the infrastructure, I remember IFRS, it's the infrastructure bill that passed, the one point two billion or whatever. And so cities, uh, have received, uh, their first half. So half of it came and then twelve months later, we get the second half. I think we get about six hundred thousand roughly. And the challenge right now, we know the broad categories, like, so we know it can be used for sewer or some of these other category. It's some of the final rules. And so probably after the first of the year as a council, we should get together and think about what the priorities around that money. I mean, there, there's several places that could be spent, but we probably still need the federal government to give guidance. For example, they may say you can spend it on sewer and we think, okay, we're gonna go spend it on sewer and then find out under the final guidance, the law, that it can only be spent on, you know, uh, residential areas that have, you know, X, Y, Z problems or something. And then we've gone out there and spent money, not the way they, they intended to. And it just, it's a little bit part of process. We do, I think it's a, it's a fairly long timeframe. I think we have to have it obligated by twenty twenty-four and spent by twenty twenty-five.
That's correct. It's, it's, well, I'm not sure the half the spent by date has been set, but it has to be obligated by twenty twenty-four. So if you remember the CARES Act money, they gave it to us and said, you better spend it now on something. And so that, we, I think we put it to good use, but I think we've got the, the timeline to be a little bit more strategic in how we use some of those funds. Broadband's gonna be another, um, another big area that there's a lot of focus in there, as well as some state funding opportunities that I think, um, will want to, you know, as a council prioritizing some of the projects. That'll be a big one, demonstrated need in the community. Um, but to the city manager's point, we're kind of waiting for the dust to settle on the final guidelines from the federal level to see where we want to dedicate some of those funds.
Thank you. Yeah. I'd kind of like for the public to hear comments about that kind of money where it's not just like, there it is, but there's no particular place where it's gonna go. I think. I will say those funds are segregated funds. So they do not go into the general fund and they do not get spent from the general fund. So that's a, right, federal dollars that are segregated into separate funds that you, you, you know, we maintain accounting documentation on. For the public to know, it doesn't, it doesn't go into the general fund and just get used for whatever.
Right. That's kind of what I wanted to know, what the definition of where that could actually be spent and, you know, what we need to be thinking about considering in the future. I think that's it. I wanted to give my thanks, uh, as a member of the community to the, everybody that was involved with the whole express and the Christmas extravaganza that went on. It was pretty, Chris Farley would say, it was awesome. And it, it was awesome that what you all did. And Zach and kind of in charge of that and the chiefs and everybody involved, it was just really a cool thing. And I think that's the kind of thing that is gonna start getting more and more popular in the city of Edwardsville. And we need to really appreciate our employees that went above and beyond to provide that for our, for our kids. And the last thing for me is Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Carolyn?
Um.
I was just gonna say real quick, Councilmember Malat's comments reminded me, um, they weren't at the, at the tree lighting ceremony, but Chief Wyndham, can you remind me the, the Thirsties folks? Chantel and Cedric Carpenter, they're the owners of Thirsties over on K Thirty-two in Bonner Springs. They hosted the, the earlier summer toy drive and provided a lot of support throughout the year, collecting some of those toys and funds that we were able to distribute to the community. So they weren't there at the, they weren't able to make it on Saturday's event, but I did want to put it on the record to thank them for all their work behind the scenes as well.
Well, thank them for me.
Will do.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, now Carolyn.
Um, thank you to everyone who was a part of the, uh, Christmas event. I was able to make the pancake cook-off that morning or the pancake breakfast that morning. And, um, man, those guys did a lot of work. There are a lot of people that put a lot of work into the event. A lot of ATVs and vehicles joined the parade, um, community members, employees that, that just worked tirelessly to make it a great event. And so thank you for that. Um, not to get you back up Dusty, but, um, the Riverview Crossroads, if they, the walkthrough on Wednesday goes well, is there any chance that we could open it up Wednesday or Thursday?
Uh, I would probably say no, um, because that punch list then has to be delivered to, well, so that's a walkthrough that will be, that punch list will be put together by KDOT and they probably won't get it until Thursday. And then we're gonna work for a Friday potential, but I just really hate to say that because the contractor has stated they will be done by the following Thursday, uh, which is hard to get a contractor to do. So I do at least appreciate them for that, but we will try to keep pushing on it, but.
Just one, just trying. So, um, one other, uh, comment that I had heard about the Riverview Crossroads is like, some folks said they're confused about the signs are off to the side that say rose, road closed and, and so they're assuming they can drive around it. Can we push the signs in further, make it more obvious that, um, there will be traffic enforcement and that it is in fact still closed unless you live up there? And that's why they might see traffic going through there?
They, there's, the inspectors checking that every single day, those barricades are across. Now, they might get pushed aside from time to time, but they aren't supposed to. In fact, he probably has a log of that in a daily log too, if we needed that. But, um, they shouldn't be open, but I mean, yeah, we keep an eye on that.
Okay. And that might be something we can use our electronic sign or something just to let folks know that this is for, you know, folks that live here. And so they're not getting caught off guard when they're just following the other cars through and then get pulled over. You know, you think road closed, you know, but there's been some confusion. So.
I, I would say typically, I, 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 you know, they try to put the road closed sign kind of in the middle and then the other two type three barricades a little behind it. So, I mean, because they're in and out, I mean, so you could, you have to work your way around them. I won't say it's that way all the time, but that's kind of how they typically set those up is the center barricade actually has the sign road closed on it. The other two are set back from that. And, you know, of course, there's still type three barricades, uh, you know, we've tried with, because we, we did keep the elect, you know, they had four electronic signs on this job, but two of them were out on the freeway and we just really didn't see the value. So they put one at kind of at the, you know, the north end up there as you come, uh, kind of right there at the north end of it. And we made sure to put the one on the south end as close to K Thirty-two, because what we found the last time we were. And we've made sure to put the one on the south end as close to K Thirty-two, because what we found the last time we worked on that road up there is the sign wasn't, you know, the sign wasn't until you got all the way up to Speaker Road and, and, you know, you're pretty committed. I mean, I, I know during this project, I forgot several times, I got all the way up there and went, oops, I gotta go all the way back, so. But yes, it's, it's, it's a challenge, so.
Thanks, Dusty. Um, I wanted to reiterate, uh, for my comments, my vote earlier, that it's absolutely nothing personal. Um, I think the, the situation and how it came about is unfortunate. I, um, personally feel like, um, you know, when we have our attorneys having conversations, uh, council people are talking, you know, getting opinions from the attorney and the person in question, um, has not been contacted. I feel like, uh, doing things, um, with transparency, with integrity and treating people how we wanna be treated should be a top priority in our city, and I've said that whether it comes to zoning things coming up or, you know, letting neighbors know what's going on. I just feel like transparency is, is incredibly important. And, um, just for, you know, for the timeline, um, I didn't know anything about it until today. And so, and I, I feel like, uh, some of us were in that boat and not everyone was. And I feel like, um, when someone's asking for clarification on the legal, um, legal opinions and asking for further legal clarification, uh, that, um, taking our time and doing our due diligence is always the way to go, to make sure that we are doing the right thing. Um, and so I just, that's, it, it has nothing to do, I, like, nothing personal at all. I, I, I hope we work together very well and in the future. I just, just the situation caught me very much off guard and I feel like it could've been handled differently. Lastly, completely separately, is January, we will be having our next, uh, Edwardsville Mobile Pantry coming up. And so I just wanted to give folks, since we're not meeting before then, or if, or if it would be, our registration's gonna be open before then. So just keep an eye on the city website, city Facebook page, um, a lot of times the school's very helpful in posting that as well, so watch for that registration opening. That's all I've got for city.
Are we still planning the December twenty-second photo op on the road?
If, if, if all things go well, that's, that is the plan. I, I know there's been a few comments about it, but I mean, that, we're not waiting for that purpose, but, uh, and it could be later, I mean, but I, I, it's a big project and we should be proud of the project, and so we wanted to give everybody that opportunity, you know, the council, the opportunity, I mean, it is a big project, it is a big, uh, you know, we should be happy that, you know, we brought federal dollars back home. And so that, that is the plan, uh, and the reason we picked that date is because that, each Wednesday is when they've been meeting for their progress meetings, et cetera. And so, again, with KDOT and the contractor and some of those, they're used to already being there on those Wednesdays. We felt like if we could do it, that would just work better. If we can get the road open earlier, we're not waiting.
Right.
We, we will not wait to open the road in order to have a ribbon cutting, just so that's clear. I mean, if they say we can open the road on the seventeenth, then we'll get the road open and we'll worry about the rest of it later, so. But I think it's worth acknowledging that the work that's been done by the, you know, by the community. That is the plan.
Right, great. What about the steel road demolition?
Oh, on the, uh, on the house there, uh, the permit, he, he came and got his permit today.
Okay.
Uh, that the holdup has been utility disconnects. Uh, one point, you know, the gas company said there's no gas in the area and the contractor's saying, but I see the meter on the side of the house, the gas line hooked up to it. And so that, that's really what's held him up now. I'm not sure, you know, he had some other projects and so he was trying to work it in, uh, but we, we helped him get connected with some. But I know he came in today to pull the permit, we, now, we don't, we don't charge him for the permit, so, right?
Right.
Cause he's doing the work on our behalf, has a business license, but we don't charge for the, for the permit. So I think we have everything, his letters, and so now he can, he can turn, he's got all his clearances that he needs from, from KDHE. He, I had to give him notice, there was a fourteen day, but that's gone, you know, a long time back. So hopefully, before the end of the month, he will have that cleared. He doesn't expect it to be more than probably a, a day, you know, day's worth of work, so. We did find that there's a little bit of a, there's kind of a separate building with a little bit of a basement and he's gonna take care of that as well.
Oh, interesting.
So, and he's gonna bring in some, I'm not gonna say he's gonna come regrade the site, but he's gonna, he's gonna have to bring in some field dirt for a couple of those places, so. He's good with that.
Okay. Have you heard from the landowner at all on that project?
We've had no further conversations with him for months.
Okay, that's unfortunate.
I mean, we will, I mean, he will heal from us.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, cause upon, you know, just process-wise, so, once the work is done, we'll receive a bill, we'll pay the bill. We then, uh, through the, through the clerk's office, uh, will send them that bill and they have thirty days to pay that bill. And then if not, then you go to the next steps, but that's, that's, you know, that's the process. Once the work's done, we have a bill, we pay it, we forward it to the, to the owner, you know, that property owner for payment of that demolition. And he's aware of that.
I, I really appreciate the, the opportunity to pass that, the, um, ordinance ten fifty, cause I know there's been some situations where people get charged later because it's been, because the fee was, was a moving target. And so it's really good to have things laid out and be very finite, and I assume those are shared when they come in.
Correct.
Those fees are shared with them.
Typically, we collect the fees at the front, you know, some cities will collect like on building permits, they'll collect the application fee or the plan review fee or some percentage of it, and then collect the rest of it later. But honestly, we've found most people would just rather pay at one time, and so that's how we do it. We just, here, here's the total of the fees, uh, the permit specialist, she kinda, you know, cause there, but there may be other fees, right? So there, sometimes there's building permit, but then there may be a driveway or there may be some other, you know, other things that they need permits for all at the same time, so we, we try to capture that and give them one kind of statement when, when that's possible.
Uh, Greg, welcome. I know we've, we've thrown a lot of heavy stuff in dumpsters over the years, so had to, had to know you through that, so thank you for your, your service to the community even before this, so. So forth, so, um, let's see. Ditto on all the Ho Ho Express, I know there's a huge amount of work, so I'm not gonna belabor at that point. You guys know I appreciate everything you do in our community. It's one of the reasons that we, we have as good a community as we have, because of the, the public safety departments and, and the public works and keeping everything moving. And my car is really enjoying a hundred and Second Street. It's, it's a nice smooth ride now. Richland's a little different story, but, uh, but I, I really appreciate everybody's effort. It's a, we've, we've accomplished a lot this year, it's been a really good year, and, um, oh, one other thing is, I would like for, for Mike and our, um, mayor to be, to think about when we can schedule a team building weekend. I think that's gonna be really important, it's been a while since we've corralled the horses, got them all pointed in the same direction.
I will do some follow-ups on availabilities and work with Mayor Alex Khar on getting that set up. I think, I think it will be valuable, uh, to, you know.
Right.
We've got the broad pieces, I think it's, it's narrowing down some of that changes, that's always a good time to do.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
I really do not have a lot to add to all of the comments that are where you were, but again, to express my appreciation to you, Greg, for, for accepting my invitation to serve on the city council. You will, you will find it rewarding, you really will. But anyway, uh, thank the staff for everything that you've done, police, fire, public works.
Police, fire.
Police, public work.
And don't forget all those folks and admin that you never see, to make sure all those folks get paid and taken care of, so. It's always, it's always easy to get up the guy, the guys and gals that do the payroll, pay the bills until it's time for you to get your check, and then everybody wants to call.
You've all been really super this year and really do appreciate it. I have really sincerely appreciated my time on this position and, uh, but I'll save any more comments until January. So with that, we are, and Merry Christmas.